All right, like Harper Creek Board of Education regular meeting for Monday, October 10th, 2022 to order. Please rise for the flag of allegiance, followed by no one else.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Secretary, please call the board. Mrs. Allward.
Here.
Mr. Betts.
Here.
Dr. Orkus.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
I'm here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Barry Smith.
Here.
And Mr. Jason Smith.
Here.
So we have a corner of several members in today. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Ridgeway, do you have modifications to the agenda?
I do have one modification. I would like to add a agenda item under information and discussion, radio tower, and have that go before the committee update we have in town from here. I would like to talk about that and add it to action, the radio tower.
Do you want to have a floor committee update?
Yeah, that would be easier. Angela, you want to do that?
A motion. Absolutely. Here calls from also the Harper Creek Board of Education as the radio tower lease to the agenda. So move. So part, uh, it's happened by Mr. Myers, supported by Mrs. Allward. We have a discussion. Here in the signal, please call the board. Mr. Barry Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Orkus.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mrs. Allward.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Jason Smith.
Yes.
And Mr. Betts.
I vote yes.
Okay. I'm for carry, so is it.
All right, thank you for that. Move on to communications. We'll start with President's remarks. Welcome everybody that attends, those watching virtually as well. Last Monday will be the candidates night, and if you get a chance, then we'll be able to watch it on YouTube. It can be found at Harper Creek's website. Coming up, we have the Community Connections Luncheon on October 27th for senior residents at 11:30 a.m. here in the admin building. Join us for a free hearty luncheon presentation that is here, can be this morning.
In order.
All right. And conferences will begin this coming week as well. So aside that, just like to thank all the Harper Creek staff for the great job they're doing as we get away at the end of the year here. So that means that we'll move on to administration and Mr. Ridgeway.
I'm just gonna reiterate the Community Connections. And so what that originally was for, we were bringing in folks in the senior set into school to get updates about the school, and we took away the senior part. We just wanna update anyone who is not connected, like they're not parents. They may be grandparents, but they don't feel that same connection. And at that meeting, and it's gonna be a luncheon, we will give an update, a kind of a state of the school address, and you can ask questions. It usually is a pretty, pretty good, good, good meeting. A couple other things. Count day was last week, last Wednesday. Our head count was up. We came in at 2,833, un-audited count. I wanna clarify that that is not our FTE. Full-time equivalents is how, what the state of Michigan will pay the district for in the per pupil amount. But we are up about 67 students from last year, and that for sure is going to have us have a little bit more revenue than we budgeted for. We should have audited numbers right around the time of the next meeting. It takes about one month to get the audited, audited numbers. COVID update, over the last four weeks, we've had a few cases, not, not as many as last year for sure. So last week, we had five cases. The week before, we had four, five before that, and four before that. So that's really good news. It seems like, at least for us at this point in time, the sicknesses aren't as much, although we hear the flu season might be strong this year after, you know, we were all kinda staying away from each other for, for a long time. I do wanna announce a few music events that are coming up. So Marching Band Festival is tomorrow at Pittsburgh at 6:45 p.m. That's actually when they play, their set is from six to eight. There's five or six schools that play during that period of time. We're at 6:45 approximately. We have a choir concert coming up on October 18th at seven in the high school auditorium. The Jazz Band Halloween Concert, October 28th at seven as well. I wanna announce that, you know, field trips are back going. We had a field trip to the Capitol, fourth graders from Bealik Elementary went to the Capitol last week, and that was like a really nice trip. And then we also had a field trip with our Wells Park Elementary fourth graders. They went to Marshall for a Haverhill Cultural Day. I'm just happy that field trips are occurring back at the school. We have a few restrictions, you know, we, we don't, we still don't have the funds of bus drivers, so the field trips have to be back by a certain time today, but at least it's happening. And then finally, I did wanna announce that I will be getting with the board. We will have another student discipline hearing that will be coming up, and I'm hopeful that we can get a, a date in the next two weeks to make that happen. I apologize, but it's just one of those things that's kind of a duty of the board number. And I think that's all I have for me.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ridgeway. Mr. Secretary, do we have any communications? Yes, we do. Pleased to announce that we have an anonymous donation of $15,000 to the high school athletic department, which is to the specific purpose. So $8,000 to replace, repair the baseball diamond fencing. $2,000 to purchase new shirts for the J.B. baseball team. And $5,000 to utilize in the 2022, 2023 year for clubs in need of funding. That's the great news I got. Kudos to the anonymous. Yes. Mr. Ridgeway. Super.
And that is our new policy at work. So anytime we get a donation, they, we fill the form out, so we have record of where the money should be spent. If it's more than $25,000, the board will accept it. It's the last, so we will send out the thing from our light.
What a high note.
It's a pretty high note.
All right. Student board numbers.
All right. So first off, I do have a few questions, you know, some comments and concerns about we have for our juniors. Our juniors don't know if anybody said anything, but they have found out that there's no more PSAT testing. So my question is, is that, is there a reason why we're taking the SAT away? Or are we not taking it away? Or is there a reason we're doing it because we're throwing the SAT around somewhere? Is anybody able to answer that?
Please. Yes.
So we, I met with Mr. Greenman. And the PSAT in the fall, the people that should be taken are people that are applying for scholarship. It's required by law to take in the spring. So it's not that we're not taking it, it's we're not taking it twice a year. Because we wanna help our his early release time, we want our teachers to have in real time data. And so when I met with them, the struggle was, how do we do PSAT and NWA? And so that is why. It's not that it's not given, it's just that we're not giving it to everyone twice a year.
Um, I do understand that some of the, most of the juniors are, you know, upset with the decision because they also put a perspective that they can get a lot of scholarship opportunities if they take the PSAT in the fall. But as we talked about last time, that we do think that SAT crap is a huge thing for our students. So we're just, and I know that you're, that is your guys' decision, but.
And I would encourage you to talk to Mr. Greenman.
Okay.
You know, if you haven't yet, like it should definitely, those kinds of concerns should be shared so that we can share with his team.
Okay.
And I'll definitely circle back and see what they're doing, because it wasn't part one.
No, absolutely.
It was that not everyone's required to take it.
Correct.
But they are required, nine through 11, to take the.
Cause I do remember last year, we did the, the MSTEP and the PSAT, and the sports were not working. Students were.
Some of that's state regulated.
Right, no, understandable.
Yeah.
But just a quick update, that, you know, most of our, most of our responses from our juniors is that they're, that we didn't do the PSAT, we're, why is the PSAT not here? PSAT is being replaced with NWA? And just, their concern is, why aren't we doing it?
So they want two, two next steps. They would have liked better communication.
Correct.
In their building administration.
Yes.
And they want avenues to make sure that he gets.
Some questions. They just wanna be also in the loop that, hey, even though, like, and not just, hey, we're not doing it, but it was all.
So as you navigate, you know, the great data point, I encourage that you set up a loop to talk with Mr. Greenman and the counselors and give them a chance to, like, hear you if they're the ones that can, you know, support them in that too.
Right, that's all I have as a break now.
Um, thank you, Kenzie. So you'll see on the graphic that I painted out in the top right-hand corner, those are just the top student concerns that we pulled from this survey this month. We asked questions like, what do you think is being improved on? What do you think hasn't improved on? And this is kind of where students are at. I'd like to point out, 68.1% of students said that vaping is an issue at our high school out of the 54 people that were surveyed. And then going along with Kenzie, we just wanna make sure that college readiness, much like last month, is something that we're looking at. I think for many students, I know for us, the PSAT helps a lot to visually see what SAT's gonna look like, to time yourself. Two practices is still not enough in that case, you know, when you get to that big test day. So I just wanna make sure that we front that up as well. Other than that, student mental health, that's always gonna be a big thing. And then why that student safety, which I do believe you guys are talking about, so.
Mr. Betts is our alternate, our alternate student board member. Anything you wanna add to the conversation?
Vaping problem. We gotta figure out how to fix it, I think is the biggest problem.
Okay. We appreciate you guys' perspective, and that's why, you know, why you guys are here. So thank you. You guys are a boost up and around. All right, we're gonna go to our multilingual learner presentation, Karen Strongway.
Hi, my name is Karen Strongway, and I'm a Harper Creek teacher. And I get the chance to work with our multilingual students. I have a degree in TSL, which is teaching English for the languages. And yeah, I was asked to just kinda share a little bit about our program and give you some updates, so. Next slide. All right. As in most of our programs, we have like a million acronyms. These are a few of them. These are some of the ones that are like the official ones from the state. I'm really working towards, as are most of our ESL teachers, English or the second language teachers in the state, are really working towards multilingual learners. It has more of a growth mindset than limited English or English language learner. So we're really trying to use that language because knowing two languages is kind of a superpower, and that's what I keep telling my students, and it's a big deal, knowing two languages, especially at an early age. And that is a huge benefit to when they're looking for jobs. If you have any questions along the way, you can ask, but I will ask your question at the end, so hopefully say that again. Sorry. Our district, as well as all the districts in the state and the country as well, students are identified through the home language survey, which they do on the registration. So that comes to me, and then what I do is I kinda leaf through them. A lot of times there's, there's, you know, like, things get misclicked on and things like that, so I make a lot of phone calls up here, and we are kinda figuring out who actually might qualify and who doesn't. Then I screen all the students, because not all the students do qualify for extra support. Our students come from a variety of backgrounds. Some of them are born in another country, some of them are born here. And they also differ in their abilities levels, ability levels of English. So not only English, but also their home language. Some are a native language. A lot of our students might be able to speak and listen in their home language, but they're not able to read and write. Some are completely fluent in all four areas in their home language, as well as English. So there's a lot of different things going on with our multilingual learners. So, next slide. Loud versus Nichols, that's the court case that kind of spurred having English or the second language teachers and programs in our schools. This happened out in California back in the seventies. You can read about it if you would like. But it really just focused in on, a group of students kinda went up with the school. Students, great job, right? You know, the students said, hey, like, this isn't fair, like, we're not getting the same opportunities in our education, and we want that changed. And so that kinda spurred all of this. And so that's part of why I'm here, is to make sure that our students and their families have what they need to make sure that we're giving them the best education that we have. This is Harper Creek at a glance. So we have students that speak languages from all of these countries. We, it's interesting, so we have 20, I have 24 students that are in my, like, direct line, like, we, I work with 24 students. I have a number of students that I monitor as well. But our district is really unique because our population is very differed. Like, we have like a third that speaks Spanish, but two-thirds are all other languages. We have several Indian dialects, Punjabi, Tagu, and then we have Vietnamese, Chinese, Mandarin. And so, yeah, it's just, it's been really fun to get to know those families, yeah.
What's the bottom one?
Oh, that's a Filipino.
Sure.
Yep. Yeah. So, yeah, I learned a lot since, this is my third year in the program, and it's been fun for me too, to get to know the families, to get to know, yeah, get to know some of their traditions. They just, I think the kids and their families really offer a lot to our district, and we're hoping, I'll say it more in the next slides, but like, really hoping to do some partnerships. Been talking to Mr. Swan about, and then the high school as well, just some ideas of things that we can do to, yeah, to celebrate that, so. Part of our program is, can't say, I'm a lot, sorry. I practiced this. All right. Part of our program is monitoring English proficiency. So part of that is we do a screener when kids first come to our district. That helps me know the areas that they need the most support in. And then yearly, we take the WIDA test, and it focuses on those four areas, reading, speaking, writing, and listening. And the way that the test runs is it's actually giving like academic questions in those areas. So like, a speaking question might have the student tell about the turtle life cycle. So it's like a sciencey question, but it's working just on their speaking. Or like a reading might be, you're gonna read the story problem and answer it, but you're, they're just being tested on your reading skills, so. And that is taken in February and March each year, so. So these are our numbers for our students here at Harper. The bottom left one with the different colors are the different levels that the WIDA shows. So the English proficiency is done from one to six, six being like, you've spoken English many, many years, and you are like 100% proficient. Students actually test out of my program at 4.8. That's a Michigan law, that's, and well, in several other states as well. It's like right in the 4.8 range where you're, you're able to do what you need to do for classes, and then for three more years after that, I monitor, check grades, check in with teachers if they need, if they need more support, I can give that to them. But that's kind of the number, the magical number saying like, you know, you've got what you need for school right now. The blue bar graph up at the top are our students. So we, majority of our students are in level three, which we're really close. I, they, we have a lot of students that are really close to testing out, and it's really exciting. They've done just some amazing growth over the last couple of years, even with everything that's happened. We've seen a lot of amazing growth in a lot of areas, so I've been really proud of them.
Karen, what is the yellow with green?
Oh, yeah, so it's, it's entering, beginning, developing, expanding, bridging, breaching. Yeah. And then going along with that a little bit too. So Michigan is adopting new English language development standards. Those will be official in '24, I think it is. And so I have them now, they've been published and everything. They're kind of being put out to all the different states. And so these next two years are just kind of learning about them, and then starting to apply some of those. The cool thing about the new language development standards is they're really focused into the captain areas for our secondary students. And so basically, I can say, okay, the student's really struggling in science. I could pull up their English language development standards and say, hey, they, they can do X, Y, and Z, we need to work on ABC. Like, and so that's gonna be great for me, but also for the teachers. I'm really excited to see how we can use those, so. So this is talking a little bit about what we do here at school. So I do work with 24 students across the grades, I'm K-12. So some students I meet with on a weekly basis, some twice a week, and then some are the monitoring progress. So either they've tested out, or it's kids that are like, just so close to testing out. And so I'm really just focusing in on, how do they need support in class? How are they doing? Do I need to pull them? So I've got a handful of kids there too. And then I'm also providing support to staff, especially in the beginning of the year, there's a lot of that. Our teachers are amazing. It's really fun to be a teacher and go into a teacher's classroom because, one, I see things that I wanna do, and, and it's just, it's amazing, the work that's being done in our classrooms. And they have, it's funny, because so many teachers are like, oh, like, they have a language learner, or I have a multilingual student, but like, they're doing so many things already that support those students. And so a part of mine is just encouraging and saying, hey, like, you're already doing this. Like, you've got visuals, you've got this, you've got what you need. Just making sure that they're able to support those students and all students too. Cause a lot of what our multilingual students need, all students can benefit from, so. And then we're working really hard at collaborating with other districts. I'm a, I'm a one person here with a huge team of people, right? But then it's nice to kinda communicate with other districts and kinda see what's going on, see how we can improve our program. Yeah, so that's been really fun this year too. And then the last point is, and this is something that's not just from me, this is from, this is being talked a lot, a lot, but just making sure students see themselves in books, instructional resources. We, I watched a video recently, which I think we, we talked about more, and I talked about maybe sending out to you guys to watch, 12 minutes, we thought that might be too long right here. But just talking about like windows and doors, and allowing books to be the windows for kids to be able to see other people, but then also be able to see, what's it, no, the windows to see, yeah, other people, and then the mirrors, there we go, mirrors to see themselves, and how important that is. And I think our teachers are really striving to do that in their classroom libraries. And so then we use some of our funds from Title III to also like, let's put more books in there, let's give kids what they need, so. And then this is what we're doing with our families. So we're working really hard now, our schools are starting to open up. I've had a couple of families come up to PTA meetings, and I've had a couple of families go on field trips, and that's really exciting, that they're, well, any families, but just family involvement's really important for everybody. And then also just making sure that we have translators and interpreters. So really, that's the little graphic kinda shows like, so translators are people that translate the written word, interpreters are interpreting our voices and the spoken word. And so I'm getting, like, we're getting ready for conferences right now. I have a number of conferences that are being interpreted for our families, making sure that they have what they need for conferences. And then translation is happening all the time. Like, we just translated a bunch of stuff for sister camp. And not all of our families need this 100% of the time, I have a few that do. But we're making sure that they have, especially when there's big schedule changes or report cards, things that you would wanna know about your kid, and why can't we put it in their home language, so it's one step easier. There's a lot of technology out there that they can use, but I love being able to be like, here, it's already done, so. And then celebrations, we had nine students test out this last year, which was huge. Four of those students were our exchange students, and five of those students are still here. And I, I'm so excited, I got those numbers, and I was so proud. And the kids are, the kids are so excited. And it's been really fun to share that with them, and we're gonna celebrate the middle schoolers at the Student of the Month Assembly, not Assembly, Student of the Month Breakfast, there we go, this week, and so I'm excited to celebrate with them too. And then our other big celebration is using our money to get books in kids' hands. We've been doing a lot of work with, we let the kids shop a lot, and so I'm like, hey, like, we have money, let's buy books. And so we went to the book fair, and we bought books together, and we, we shopped online together, and then we play a lot of games just for speaking English. And so I bought a bunch of games at, in the springtime, and they took them home over the summer. And this year, I was like pulling out some of those games, I'm like, hey, I'm playing at that with my family at home, and that's really fun, so that you know they're using some of that English at home as well. But I also encourage my students, like, speak their native language too, because I want them to be dual language forever, so. What questions might you have?
Sounds like you're doing a great job again.
It's fun. There's a lot of things to improve on, but it's fun. It's what I do.
I appreciate, I appreciate the idea that you're looking for books that where they can see themselves in their books. I think that's what I think is lacking in some of the libraries.
It's so important. And there's studies being done right now too, like, just the amount of books authored by people of color and people of different nationalities, and I, some of them are very few numbers, and so we wanna get those books in kids' hands as much as we can. Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your nomination. All right, district updates, curriculum, Mrs. Williams. Good evening.
Good evening. So just to follow up here and reference the video, one of the things that we do to support Karen, this is her first year, she went to Special Population Conference, it happens annually, typically in the fall, and so last spring, I said, you know, I think it's really important now that we're back past virtual PD to attend. And she attended virtually, but she got tons of information as a network for special populations. And one of the pieces she brought back was a TED Talk video that I did include in your report. If you click the link she referenced, you'll find it in the video, so that is included in your report. And it's about a young lady, now an adult, who talks about the importance of seeing herself in books. And not only at the Special Pop Conference, but at other trainings, they do talk to us about the importance of our young people seeing themselves represented. Not only in the books they play read, but in the sciences, the inventors, and the mathematicians. I do wanna lift Karen up, she's doing an amazing job. I'm her direct supervisor, and we meet regularly, and I will do, I do her evaluation and watch her, and she's grown significantly as far as helping the students take out of learning, which I just think she's doing a phenomenal job, so I want to. NWA, we are doing, it says 12, but it's actually K-11. If there was a 12th grader that teachers wanted to support in NWA, they could. Our alternative, our academic achievement center are also being tested. So we have a K-8 report, which I'll, you know, just reference in a minute, but our high school is still testing, so we'll share those results with you next. I do wanna reiterate that, you know, we'll continue to support the high school. If we are transitioning to new administrators, there's some things, you know, that they'll need some support on, understanding around testing. But the important part is that our students have clarity on what they need to know and the gap that they hold within that. So some of it is testing these categories, but much of it is priorities needed, so our teams are continuing to work on that. Spent some time in the auto mechanic shop, we have a new person who is in the process of being certified, and she is a go-getter. She's using our backwards design to plan. She thinks we need a new book. The book we have has windows that roll up like this. And I'm looking at the date, it's like, I don't know, 1906, I'm not sure, it's 1990 or something. But anyway, so she's in the process, I'm just giving you a heads up. I'm supporting her, and she'll work with her, what we call a CAC team later, CAC team later, to go through the process to bring to the board, next month actually, a proposal. to go through the process to bring to the board, next month actually, a proposal for a textbook. While we don't typically dive into textbooks, there are not tons of open education resources or units. Like, this is a case where we do need to consider having a resource, so that she can use it in both her basic aisle and advanced. And we work closely with our career center, because our goal is to have these courses, right? We don't want to replace the career center, we just want to get our young people interested, either for their own personal vehicle care, or for a potential career path. So, this is a course that would feed into our career center, like, I talked to you about our teacher program, social, our criminal justice program, etc. We, as far as training, we, cognitive coaching, the mission of cognitive coaching is to empower through the Canadian thinking and conversations, we have thirty-two people that started their training, it's an eight-day training, two at a time. It's in November, February, and January, February. Alabama College, we have thirty-three students, so I just really want to take some cognitive look on the teachers that said yes. Like, it's, it's really testament to them wanting to continue to grow the profession and support the young people coming from Alabama, so. Not much more on that, other than just they're doing a phenomenal job. And then, just, I, and we'll go over each piece, you were able to read it, we had the Run Culture and Climate Diet, he brought in Jerry. And so, teachers were invited to go see him, he, he's also grown. Like, I saw him before COVID, about five years ago, and it was, I struggled, because it was almost like dogging education. But his, his presentation was on culture, and he charged and challenged each individual in the auditorium, there were probably four hundred people there. What role, what influence could you have to help with climate? And so it wasn't just someone else's job to make the climate, we all had a role, so he had a really powerful message there. All right, I think the next step is just to kind of take a look at baseline data. This report right here, which is linked at the top, this is right, you go all the way to the top, where it says the goal report. So this setup should look differently, and I did this intentionally, right? So you kind of predict, oh, this is coming. So the numbers are current, but there are two things we look at. We look at proficiency, which is, are they at benchmark, but we also look at growth. So over COVID, we had young people, some young people fall significantly behind due to health, due to a variety of reasons. And so we're monitoring both. We did come to you, I believe it was the last board meeting, and talk about the goal. We did change it from last year to be one which is on that benchmark. So it's like a sixtieth percent of growth, which would be a year's growth. And so I'll just give you some time to take a look at, the top is proficiency. If it's blacked out, it means the numbers are small, and because of FERPA, you know, it would be identifier. And so we don't share numbers that are too small, so it's to be aligned with FERPA regulations. We have, when we look overall, we have a lot of work to do, because at NWA, you'll see that thirty-five percent in the fall, baseline data, are proficient in reading, and thirty-seven percent proficient in the area of math. So we'll be monitoring these data, and in between the fall and the winter, that's where administrators and CAC team leaders are supporting the district teams to be really intentional about what are the priority standards. And so if you have students in this, in our district, I encourage you to ask, like, what is it that you're supposed to know and be able to do? They should be able to tell you. And we're working with our teachers to make sure that they know when they're driving that, the teachers are responding when they don't tell us. All right, there's breakdown by ethistee and Reese. And then the next piece is growth, which you'll see our tickets agree. You'll see the goal change, which we talked about, which is we'll have a sixtieth percent growth or higher in the area of reading, and then the sixtieth percentile or higher in the area of math. So those are the two core contents we'll be measuring with NWA. So we don't have growth scores right now, because we, that's our baseline data, so that will be filled in in February.
So is that sixty percent on top of what's proficient now, or?
So there's two different, so, growth is about, it's called SGP, student growth percentile. And so it's separate than what's above. And so what it means is, it equates to, would grow around a year's worth of growth or a year's worth of instruction. So I asked your question again, to see if I think.
So, the sixty percent target growth, what is that measured on?
So it measures if they grow, it's NWK, so we get both a proficiency score and a growth score. So like, if a student had a ten percent growth, it means they did not grow, that was really, really concerning, because they did not grow. If they had a sixtieth or higher, it would be right on the growth we would expect. And there's bands, so like, there's almost not the growth, the state does have a similar calculation.
Does NWA show growth of our top students if they were?
It shows growth, it shows growth by student, by class, by, great, it shows at all levels.
So if we have a student that is very much advanced.
Correct.
They would still see, see growth?
It would give an SGP, a student growth percentile for every test student. And so, it is harder, right, to get the sixtieth percentile, but that's why we have a tiered support where we're working to accelerate them, so that they're not just waiting for the next grade or the next score.
So when I worked with it, even the top students could show growth, you wanted them to show growth too, so it's not just the ones that are behind.
Every student, which is why, right, every student. So they actually get, each teacher gets a clod of it report, and it'll show students that were advanced and advanced, and accept, and grew in an advanced kind of way. That would be this, or students who are behind and had accelerated growth, or students who were advanced and didn't grow. So the teachers have, would support them in reading that, most of them know how to read it, that was our new teacher's score.
I guess I interpreted your comment that as, students who are high achievers, they said mathematically, it's like it'd be more difficult for them to get, see sixty percent growth.
Probably.
And, I'm still kind of struggling with the math, I know it's kind of a, it's a different type of metric, the growth, so.
So is the baseline, the data that was shown, it's on, I guess, page fifteen, maybe previous?
The baseline is the proficiency data.
The NWA?
Correct.
So that's the baseline?
For K eight, so our high school is still in the process of testing.
Okay.
So here's an eyeball question.
Here's an eyeball question.
Well, I'm just trying to connect the dots on the data, right? So when we look at this, we, I mean, for the purpose of measuring stuff, if we can look at it and say, we're winning it, we're, we're happy. What would you, and this, I don't expect you to have an answer for this, I'm just thinking in my head, if we got to that sixty percent growth target, which is not proficiency, what would we expect the proficiency numbers to look like as a result of that growth?
So you're curious about the correlation between the growth and proficiency?
Yes. And I don't, again, I don't expect you to have an answer on that, but who you would expect are.
Yeah, mathematically, a hundred percent grew, a year's worth of growth, and every year, then a hundred percent would be proficient. Right? Because if we had a year for a year for a year.
You're right, yeah. Again, we'll, we'll have to watch.
We can continue to watch, yeah, yes.
I mean, if you were measuring both, it would be interesting to see how they relate.
Any other questions you have about the setup of this report? Mr. Ridgeway will be going over a continuity learning plan, which basically, this is the measurement of that, right? And so, that's at a different agenda item, but. Any, any other questions relative to the narrative report, or any, you think that, there's a strong hand here? Question?
I'll just, I'll just comment, that's a long putt on some of these, if you look at the jump off. I don't know if everyone can look back at it.
Oh, the growth or the proficiency?
The growth.
Yeah, the growth, you said a long putt?
Very difficult.
Yes, correct.
Very, very difficult.
Yep. And that is, that just elevates the importance of being really crystal clear about knowing what the priority learning is, and that having our students know. So part of this, without getting too much into the weeds, is when it's done well, and we're working with teachers to see this, the students can articulate what the learning is they need to do. Not the number, but the specific learning they need to do. And those are the classrooms where we see the biggest growth, so like a point eight. We have some classrooms that it's happening, and that's the power of the professional learning community. So like, if the three of us, we're teaching first grade. Would you want to teach first grade?
Sure.
Yeah, we're teaching first grade, and we're monitoring together, specific, so in this, it shows like, what areas we specifically need to be working on. What you're looking at is just some of the data, but there it would be. And let's say Mr. Smith, he has showing growth through his assessment process, I'm not sure it is much, and, you know, accelerating growth, I'm sure. Then I have the opportunity, and I have to be vulnerable, but to hear what they're doing to get to that growth.
Well, I'm not questioning the target.
No, I know, I, I agree.
Personally, I like difficult targets.
Yep.
However, I think understanding the level of difficulty is, is important. Of course, in the future, some months in the future, we'll probably see this, someone will see this information again, and there'll probably be questions.
Yeah. We, if you remember, last year, the question, we had like, that eighty percent went, reached the goal, and I think Mr. Smith was concerned about the goal. And, and we have to work together to accelerate growth, or they'll continue to be behind. And so, those of us who know we're doing our own learning, we're looking at our resources, and.
Is it more or less prescribed?
Well, we're modeling the state articulation, right? We're modeling the state articulation, so it wasn't like.
If that's the case, then it is what it is. All right.
Thank you.
All right, we find facilities and Mr. Robinson, good evening.
Thank you. I submitted a report last week, or I submitted this week, sorry. But, just any questions on that? Couple things, we are starting to, right now, we begin planning for next summer's projects, I'm gonna work on that. There's a lot of them, so we need to get some plans and finances around, and see what we can do, what we can't do. The other reason is we're gonna start planning this early is just because everybody knows the lead times of, the lead type of equipment, parts, pieces, anything, is incredibly long right now, we're doing six to twelve months, it's a little long. So, we're starting that planning phase right now. Mr. Ridgeway and I have been talking a little bit about it as well. The high school HVAC project is, okay. High school HVAC project, we had a meeting today with the engineering department, and a bunch of the other constituents on the project, and we're working through some issues with that, nothing, not issues, I shouldn't say, we're still trying to get planning and stuff for our area. We still do not have information, who are these units to come in? They were ordered last February, we're still searching for a date. So, they keep, now they moved it to March, so we're getting, it's, I'm not gonna lie, I'm getting very nervous. When they start talking March, April, May, June timelines, that puts us under a pretty big gap. But hopefully it'll be good news, I keep telling myself, things will turn around.
We could add those, here as late as, and still make it work for the summer, June.
Early March.
So we still have a three month time, but we've already.
Yeah, it's already been pushed four times, I think it went from, you know, last year to, you know, it's been pushed probably more than four times. So, other things, because story, you've read my report, they're having an awful time with me. We are at a loss right now of what to do. I'm working with their company diligently, trying to come up with ideas. They even have a hiring bonus, if somebody recommends somebody, I mean, they get a pretty lucrative bonus. But, I ain't, I ain't let that one, we're working on that. And they got hit with some illnesses last week too, which really, but all in all, I think they're doing pretty good. But, the lady that's in charge, Cherie Scott, is our district manager, and she, I can't say enough good things about her, she's phenomenal. And I, I'm sure, I know, I think you got one principal back there, I'm sure Mr. Swan would probably, I hope he would agree with you. I don't want to pre-mow the spot back there, but, that's going well. One thing else, on the crosswalk project, I did get some communication with Mr. Dubois as well. And he went from, he was working with Evan Cowshir, working on some variances, and now he's had to take that to the county. So hopefully, we're gonna hear something from him. I don't have much good news, unfortunately, sorry.
Any questions for Mr. Robinson, sure, my best.
Swim scoreboard, Dawson.
What's that?
Swim scoreboard, Dawson.
Oh, swim scoreboard? Yeah, it, it's pretty incredible, some of the stuff, they're gonna be able to do with it, thank you. The coaches and some of the other folks are doing an online training, and I don't know when that date is, to where they can really build graphics of their own, the ones that are on board, I don't know if anybody's seen it, I know a couple of you.
I've seen it and I've played with it, just because, you know, the coaches were there, and that's a huge part of the men's swimming last year. But it is, like, just the design work on it, and like, the whole new, you know, what you can do. Like, Ms. Hawkins, today, she was able to put like, pictures of, you know, our seniors, our girls up there. And they were able to put on this huge display, so it's a, definitely a good part for us.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty impressive piece of equipment. We're already getting questions about when can we put those in other places in the district. And the problem is, we're struggling, because some of our local schools are putting these different places in the district, so. It's gonna have to be pushed out a little bit.
So we'd love to see pictures, any of the future means, if you have a chance.
I'd be happy to do that, I'd be happy to do that, I actually had some, and, I don't know, but anyway, sorry, I took too much time.
Thank you. Anybody have any further questions, comments? All right, we'll move on to finance, and Ms. Obray.
All right, I have the same reports I gave, yeah, the first one is the cash balance report. Some things that are a little bit different, we collect summers, as you guys know, summer taxes, so the debt is higher. And the general fund is doing well, even though we actually don't get a state aid payment in September. And that's because we get the taxes. The debt fund, you'll see, will drop in the next one, because the interest is due in October. And then again, another big payment in June. Another thing that I just want to point out, that I do most days, the general fund and payroll, they're both general fund, I just do a transfer for payroll. And there was a payroll on the last day in September, that's why it's a little bit high, things just haven't been cashed yet. That's the cash balance report, the next one, see what he brings up. The check register summary, I do give, in the finance committee, I do give the detail of, of every check. So if there are questions, but if you take a look, it is a little bit higher, there's a few reasons for that. One, just being the beginning of the year, we're paying a lot of our regular, beginning of year invoices. And then also, there were three pays in September, and so, of course, we just had naturally more money there, awesome. But nothing unusual, every, every month, well, every day, pretty much I go through this. Every month I really do a thorough, nothing unusual, everything seems to be on point. And the third report is another way to check that, and a little bit easier way to explain some things. The revenue up top, I have been giving you last year's information, if you guys remember, because I wanted you guys to see where we were at audit-wise. This is the new twenty-two, twenty-three original budget that you guys passed in, in June, through where we were at as of September thirtieth. The local is hi- higher, sixty-five percent, that's the taxes that I said was summer collection taxes. The athletics, before and after school care, every, the, the things like that, is what makes that up. The state aid is so low, like I said, we didn't get any state aid this year, all of that is, I'm sorry, this month, we are this year. All of that is, I'm sorry, this month, we are this year. In September, the twenty-one thousand is carryover from last year's money. So we, for example, didn't spend all of our at risk. You fill out something out and you carry it over into this year. So that's what, and early lit is another small number that you get. If you don't spend all of it, it gets sent over to the side. And I didn't, the state aid, we didn't get state aid in September. No school in Michigan does. We get it eleven out of the twelve months is what that is. The federal is the mostly esters that we spent and then some title, titles. Usually salary of teachers and things like that. And then for the expenses, what I like about this is the expenditures of year-to-date budget. And when you look down, it all seems pretty much on point. Some things that I wanted to talk about was, for example, a lot of the one hundreds are salary, salaries and benefits of the ten-month employees. So that's why the thirteen point five makes sense because they just started their new contract. The summer programming being a little bit high makes sense percentage-wise because it's the summer and then next summer. We'll cover that. Some support services, if you look down, have, a lot of them have a little bit higher percentages. And that's because some of, as the one-on-ones, the one-on-twos are teachers and things like that. The lower ones are salaries of a lot of peoples whose contracts go from July to June. So that's why they have, they have a higher percentage because we've been paying on those since July. Two-five-nine has a larger percentage percent-wise and that's because it's insurances and summer tax fees. So that's why we're almost, we're almost on paying on that. And then the other one that stuck out was two-eight-one, which is a hundred and four percent. But that's just because I, it was, it was an expense out of a grant, a one-time thing. I but I guessed twenty-four thousand, it cost us twenty-five thousand. So even though the percentage looks high, when we do a revision, it'll, it'll be right on point at one hundred percent because we're done spending none of that category. So if you go down, it just, it just gives you a look at where we're at compared to the original budget. And again, when we do the revision, it's going to change some, but nothing above the percentages stick out to me as unusual. I don't know if you guys have questions.
You're in essence, basically what I would call reforecast once you, since the count's taken. So I guess I would say on track or not on track?
We are on track, I would say. The, I mean, the revenue is not, based on, you can't tell, right? But expenditures, I would, I would say nothing, everything looks like where it should be. I would, I would expect the percentages to be where they are.
I appreciate the detail you've given us. I can, I understand for the community too.
All right, any further questions, comments? All right, so now we'll move on to technology and Mr. Mader.
Okay, so I'm giving you an update on our e-rate process. So we have the vendors doing wiring for all of the classroom ports. So actually this week, we have the vendor doing the elementary buildings, come through to do a walkthrough and finalize the location so they can get their work scheduled. The middle, the middle high school vendor is still in process. And much like with the other Tims projects, we were waiting a long time for lots of stuff. So we're starting our e-rate filing for next year now as well. We're going to be asking for more network hardware replacement, upgrades, license fees, basic stuff, nothing too crazy next year. And then some of the equipment we've worked on and need to work on. So it was about a week ago now, we replaced our core network switches. So basically the entire district network, everything converges on one point. And that point we replaced. It's a pair of devices that have a standby and one of the failed, so we got those replaced. That was good. Actually, we're finalizing dates to replace more equipment at the high school, middle school later this month. It arrived as well. In the future, we're going to need to think about upgrading our servers. That's still a year or two, we can probably get by without doing that. That price can vary wildly, so we're still trying to work on exactly this we need, but just want to let you know that that's coming. The high school needs two new large projectors, the one in the auditorium. It's about as old as the building and it needs to be replaced. I'm working on getting that one done sooner than later. And the one in the cafeteria, we had this control system replaced, but it really needs a new projector as well. So those are things we're working on. We bought a whole bunch of computers for middle school staff in two thousand and eighteen and we're hoping to get those through five years. So they got another year, so towards the end of next year, I want to start replacing, looking at replacing those. And we're definitely working on a potential clock and camera system upgrades. As I mentioned before, this is one of the projects we hope to be able to fund with safety funding coming down the pipe. The middle school desperately needs a new clock system. Beetle Lake needs one as well. So we're hopeful that we can put something together that will be affordable and ultimately would like to do the entire district. Camera system, the same way, we're looking, there's money with the county and there's a lot of variables there yet. But we're looking at what might happen with upgrading our camera system and access control system as well. So that's the stuff that we're doing, we're wanting to do, we're needing to do, we're going.
Any resolution on the high school Wi-Fi?
So we've done a little bit of looking at that. I would like to get more data. We have our wireless, what would you call this thing we bought that we could put in the building and look at the signals? And that isn't showing us any obvious problems. We looked at one thing, we found there was a security certificate that was set incorrectly. We changed that. So I'd love to hear from the students at some point, or if you have follow-up data, maybe we could talk about that at some point and get some specifics too. Because if there's a certain population of kids or a group that's having trouble, I'd love to just like sit down with them and like look at it and get the data we need to really dig into it.
I do know there's like a few classrooms and like places, just because, you know, it's a metal roof. Sometimes you're not going to have Wi-Fi at certain places. But there's some concerns in that like certain classrooms that you have Wi-Fi, but it's other classrooms, like won't be connected at all. Which I would love to get, just help out with that. And for like, I know that a few classrooms, like dead center and a few hallways that are just, they don't, like missing those classrooms and then downstairs. Is it hallway, I think? Like doesn't get Wi-Fi a lot, just, but there's, I know there's, we're getting closer to technology-based, like assignments and everything. And everyone's needing to use their computers every day. So just to, I just hope to fix that and make sure every classroom has what they need.
That would be great. Wi-Fi is notoriously difficult to diagnose and troubleshoot if you can't actually see anything.
Correct.
So maybe you guys can come out, work together to figure that out. All right, anything further for Mr. Mader? All right, let's move on to comments related to agenda items. All right, therefore the next session. All right, so I'm told we have no comments related to agenda items. We may have some the next comment session. Move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Secretary.
Chair calls for a motion of the Heartland Board of Education approves the consent agenda as follows. Approve the general funds checks, school services fund checks, and the student school activities fund checks in accordance with the list discussed. Approve the following minutes as reviewed. Approve the August eighth, twenty-twenty-two closed session board meeting minutes. Approve the August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two special closed board meeting minutes. Approve the September eighth, twenty-twenty-two budget committee meeting minutes. Approve the September twelfth, twenty-twenty-two regular Board of Education meeting minutes. Approve the September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two policy committee meeting minutes. And approve the October third, twenty-twenty-two building committee, committee meeting minutes.
So move.
Support. Then move on to Solberg, supported by Mr. Myers. Do we have discussion? Please call the board.
Mr. Barry Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Borders?
Yes.
Mr. Jason Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Bass?
I will guess.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you for that. Move on to information discussion. We will start with the radio tower for Sonoma, Mr. Ridgway.
Okay, so Michael is coming forward from the county. He can introduce himself a little bit about what his position there is. On the screen, I have put a picture of, of Sonoma, like you see the parking lot. A little older, we've explained on the parking lot, the trees out there, but the red spot you see is the proposed site of a new nine-one, sorry, nine-one-one tower or just radio tower. And so I, we, as a board, are going to lease this land to the county for the purpose of constructing the tower and operating a tower. Just so you know, our radios do use those same towers, the new radios this year we received about three years ago. So it would be to our advantage to have that tower there. Our reception in Sonoma is spotty at that. Michael.
All right, thank you. Just give a little background, in April, or I'm sorry, August of twenty-twenty-two, voters approved a village for nine-on-one services, which included an infrastructure upgrade. A major piece of this is this radio project. What we're trying to address is across the community, across the county, we use multiple radio systems for first responders. The fire departments are on an older VHF technology, which is a very old analog system. Police are, law enforcement is on the state's radio system, which does not have the proper infrastructure, the proper towers within the county to provide reliable services. So as the dispatch authority, as part of this village proposal, we did sign at the end of last month a fourteen point five, to shy fourteen point five million dollar investment for these radio towers and for user radios for police fire EMS. And as Superintendent mentioned, your school system also uses that radio system as well on the state system. So this would provide increased coverage for police fire EMS switching fire over to the state system to provide a greater benefit to the county and community as a whole, but specifically also that benefit to your district. To have that in-building coverage, both for your radios, but also in the case of any emergency or any kind of first responders in the building, to have that reliable communication with each other and with dispatch utilizing this system. So what we are proposing would be a lease, a zero-cost lease for that property. Motorola did come out and look at that site. We believe that it is a suitable site and in compliance with the Dory Township zoning ordinances. We'd be looking at a three-hundred-foot structure. Again, that would, yeah, the CI system. Also included in this project, there is a, I believe it's a hundred and eighty-foot tower on that property already closer to the district or closer to the school. We are proposing the removal of that, of that tower as well. So this would essentially replace that tower that's there with a taller tower. And also obviously we want to remove as little of the wooded area as possible. But we do believe that that wooded area does provide a aesthetic buffer that doesn't exist now with that current tower.
So I'm not asking the board to approve the lease tonight. This has become the first, you've seen it, I received it over the weekend or Friday. And so what I would like to do is, or I'd like the board to do, is to give me the authority to negotiate the lease with the county, check the lease with our attorney's office. But I just want to make sure if anybody had any questions or any opposition to having a radio tower in that wooded area. I'll have some questions like, where's the egress point to Be Drive South? Is it going to be in our property or straight to Be Drive South? With those few things I would talk about behind the scenes with the county to make sure that aesthetically as pleasing as possible and not interrupting to our, our daily.
That's real quick, you know, my initial points. We did, when Motorola was out there, we did talk to some of the neighbors. They came out, they were curious. They seemed supportive of the project and that location. And the second piece of why this is important is because our next step before we go to zoning and before we can even bring a final exhibit to the leases to do the engineering work. So we're going to have to put a lot of money into the design of the site before we have a document both for a final lease exhibit and for zoning. So having, having this discussion early on before we make that investment is important.
So that's what they ask us to manage is that you give me the authority to enter the agreement if I find that service to be acceptable.
So what will happen to the old tower? Is it part of this place, is it going to be removed?
Yes, so the old tower would be removed. The, one of the things that we do need to discuss is the shelter, if the school has any, if the district has any need for storage or a desire to keep that shelter, just because to remove all that building is very expensive. But we do have, I mean, if the school desires for that to be removed or removed, but that is part of this project, it's removable at that site.
Yeah, I would probably have Mr. Robinson take a look at the shelter to see what it is. We, we could probably use storage space, I'm not sure how well it's, I believe they put in it. At least on top of the hill.
It's above top of the hill.
Do they go underground, like shelters go underground?
I, I'm not sure why. There must be.
It's a big number for.
Yeah, there must be significant foundation work because when the engineers looked at it, they said they expected it to be close to two hundred thousand dollars for the shelter.
It looks like a little building.
Yeah.
Two hundred thousand?
We paid about that to remove.
So I have kind of laundry list of questions. So things like radiation, I mean, I'm sure all this has been checked out, but that's our job as elected officials. So to ask these questions, what can you tell us about things like radiation and emissions and all of that?
Yeah, so I mean, these, these structures are safe as far as the emissions. They, we will have signage for the, the structure itself, like you don't, for safety reasons, we don't want people like in the shelter or close to it. But as far as safety concerns, I mean, these towers do get built, residential areas, school properties. And these are, this is a, you know, the, it goes through a whole process with the FCC. So there is, there isn't any underlying concern as far as, you know, exposure to radiation or anything.
And how many neighbors in the area were actually contacted?
So at this point, nobody's, so the contacts we had were curious neighbors that have come out for this to move forward, to bring, for zoning, they would be noticed by the Dory Township or public hearing. So at that point is when they would get officially noticed.
Okay. Just a voice that I'm sure it's, it's could be built, it's, it'll be stable as far as weather. And I know that those things are obviously considered, but it's still something that people want to hear that, hey, this isn't going to blow down the wind.
Yeah, so it, a couple of things on that, things that are into consideration, I'm basically, it's going to be wind, it's going to be ice loading. The engineers also take into consideration falling zones as far as ice. So there'll be ice shields and things of that nature. And also they are designed to self-collapse so that they're engineered that essentially they will come down, they'll come straight down. It doesn't collapse sideways, it would collapse down the center.
Interesting, I see the, there's up to five hundred dollars per occurrence for commercial general liability. Interesting, I see the, there's up to $500 per occurrence for commercial general liability insurance and 2004 comprehensive automobile liability insurance. I guess that's carried by?
So the authority would carry the insurance.
Okay. The last question I had was, I think you addressed it, like access role and things of that nature, that's not that decided yet.
That is not, and that is, we can work with the district as to what best suits you need on that.
Maybe else have any questions?
I've got a couple. So is this actually on our property?
Yes. Who asked the first? Any checks?
Second, is there going to be environmental impacts to be done?
Yes.
And how about an archaeological survey?
Yes, both of those are required.
Maybe else have any questions? Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I move on to information discussion. Item eight, many updates. One, school safety committee.
All right, we met today as a school safety committee. We did have a guest come in, Robert Stalen, came from, he's a deputy director at 911, I guess by center, and he talked to us about the rave panic alert. Apparently, the rave app has been used in Eaton County for some time, and he was familiar with that. And what the app would do is if we had an emergency, our staff would have this app, and they could basically call 911, and then the app would notify all the other staff members in the building. So in the worst-case scenario, we have an active shooter, the teacher pushed a button, it would send a text alert to all teachers in the building. And we think that that would be another layer of safety, so that in the worst-case scenario, we react as quick as we possibly can. Typically, what'll happen, and this is just from other school shootings that have occurred, people don't realize that the sound that they're hearing is gunshots. And so therefore, it takes them a little bit of time to react, and that every second will save lives, and so this may help to save some lives. So we.
Here's the app. Can we just see what it looks like? And you'd have to hold it down for a second and a half for it to activate. What would be making, like a 911 call?
Yes, I think the best way I can describe it is you wouldn't make an accidental call like I do all the time to my kids, and they yell at me and tell me, oh. I'm sure nobody's ever had that problem.
Good.
But it has, it's got, it's got double speed. You gotta swipe to turn on and then a second and a half before it actually makes the phone call. But it also will do other things. If you're injured, it would not necessarily tax the entire staff, but in the worst-case scenario, basically for active shooter or fire, it would, it would tax the staff, but for everything else, it would just go to 911 and we can call it in from there. So we are really curious about that, checking out the cost and the model. We do have safety money coming, and we talked about that as a, as a committee from the state of Michigan, and we're not sure exactly how much it is. We think it's somewhere between 200 and 7,000 to maybe 400,000, so hopefully at a higher end. And these things that Jim Maynor talks about, cameras and clocks and PA systems, and then this, are all things that we've talked about amongst a list of things we think are important to increase safety. We had a conversation about outside door keys. We did have an incident this week where an outside key was stolen, and so we had it to remove and the cores and rekey at a school of ours. And so we were talking a lot about, should we discontinue the use of outside physical door keys instead of using fobs? And we feel like in the future, as we move forward, that's something we'd like to move forward towards, is having less keys and more fobs for outside. It'd be great to do all keys inside and outside, the expense is extreme, but we decided that the outside piece was actually something that's doable based on what Jim Maynor, we haven't talked Jim Robinson 100%, but it's something that's in the ballpark that we could actually do ourselves versus having a bond issue to make that happen. But having less physical keys, I think we all know that keys can be replicated, and there may be more keys out there than we care to know, and so going to fobs, we can turn those on and off at any given time. It would give people access. Let's say I'm a community member, I want to use the gym for, to coach my youth team, we could give them a fob and access for a certain period of time, and then we could remove that add-on when they're done. It's much safer. Other things that came up. Crosswalk was talked about. Jim gave a little update on it. We are happy to see that kids are using the actual walkway we put in for the middle school behind the school. That is, that was the first safety concern, that they were walking on the road where tires were picking up their, their kids after school. And hopefully, we'll get the crosswalk installed soon, sooner than later. We know we have a financial commitment from our neighbor, and we're hopeful that, you know, that is still available when we get to the book where we want to put this crosswalk in. I think that was it. We talked a little bit about threat assessments, and I, along with five other folks in the district, went to a threat assessment. We feel like that is going to be a way that we can have a process to navigate when we have a threat assessment. There's a much different threat when a student says, I'm going to come and shoot up the school on October 10th, and I'm mad at these people, versus a elementary student that says, I want, on the playground, tells another student, I want to kill you. There's two different things there, and we want to make sure when we go through threats that we understand the differences and how we react to those. In, in all cases, we want to take it seriously, but we want to see what the student needs for help on the backend, because, yeah, we can, we can do discipline, we can expel, but reality is that person probably needs some, some help of some sort, and what help can we give them? And then wrapping ourselves around them to see what are the issues in that child's life we thought was important. And so we are going to move forward with implementing that threat assessment program. Yeah, it was also brought to our attention that there is a person, I think in Lansing, that has something called a Roman teacher aid kit, and this would be a kit if someone was injured seriously, like tourniquets, some bandages, a vented chest seal. This person would like to see this in every single classroom, and so we're going to check in the cost and where we're at with it to see if we want to put that in every classroom. And I, you know, I said, it's a long ride from us doing the Band-Aids and the gloves that we were doing to make people safe with blood or pathogens, but, you know, in today's world, you know, there are folks that want to make sure we have every possible thing. But they didn't say first responders, they said zero responders.
Zero responders.
Yeah, so the teachers could be zero responders if the, if the worst case happened in a classroom. And we've had serious injuries in, in school, there's no doubt about that, and, you know, having people there that can, we, just so you know, we have a Merg team, and the Merg team is a medical emergency team that's trained in every building, so when we have a student that has a seizure, or we have a student that is injured, that the Merg team is called and they go down and do first, first aid right now, and this could be another layer of help for kids that are seriously injured. Yes?
I do agree with that, and if you do go forward with that, would every teacher have to be trained on how to use all that?
I don't know really much about it at this point. I wouldn't know how to use it, so probably.
Right.
I never, I've never been a attorney to that personally.
My thought is it's probably a proportion of what's, and it would be used for probably a large-scale crisis. And I don't want to say what that large-scale crisis is, but you can, it would be good, you know, with something like that, this could be the difference between saving lives and not, but.
And that is pretty much what we're discussing, discussing the safety committee. Our biggest charge is going to be coming to the board when the safety money becomes available to get approvals for whatever we want to look for with cameras, I guess the clocks, PA systems, those types of things, but everything there would be fobs.
All right. Questions on the safety committee? If not, we'll move on to the building committee update.
Okay, just a quick report. The building committee was basically meant to look at site planning over a long period of time, especially this main site. And so we had King Scott, as long as, along with CSM came. King Scott showed us some site plans, because eventually, we're going to have to replace the current middle school. We're not talking about next year, more than likely, this is, you know, down the road 10, 15 years, but we want to make sure we don't build something or put in a new project that will have to tear down in 10 or 15 years, so we want to be wise. We also talked about elementary additions. We have, we are aware that we have specials on parks at our elementary schools, and we want to address that problem, which potentially could be a wing on each elementary, so we asked a lot of questions. Approximately, this is just approximations, it's about $5 million to do a wing in an elementary school, so we have three of them, that'd be about $15 million. For Harper Creek to raise the funds in terms of either extending our, our current village or actually adding mills, we really couldn't get enough money to do that project at the earliest, 2025, so that would be three years down the road, which is kind of a long-term situation, especially for our teachers that are on carts right now. And, you know, we don't want that, but we want to look for where those long-term solutions are, and so we're going to continue to look at what we can do. Unfortunately, we can't, or we could go out for a 0% increase, a 0-mill increase right now, but we can only make about $4 million, which that wouldn't even cover one of the, one of these elementary additions. And the reason is because we have maxed out our school bond loan fund, so we borrowed money upfront from the school bond loan fund way back in 2003, 2004, to build what we have the current high school, as well as renovating the elementary schools and renovating the middle school, which was great, but it also means we cannot get a significant amount of money by not buy, by doing a 0-mill increase. Now, we could go to voters and ask for an increase, a mill or two mills, and we, as the building committee, want to make sure we don't do that unless it's worth the while. Like, we have a need that we have to fill, and right now, it's not even worth the conversation until about 2025 is what we came up with in the building committee, unless I'm saying that incorrectly. And then Ginger was.
It's not worth it money-wise.
Right, it's not worth it yet for us to move forward with it, because we wouldn't raise enough money to do a project that would fit, that would fix the needs that we have. The immediate need is the elementary schools and teachers on.
And can you just share, just for anybody that's listening online or in the audience that doesn't understand why the need for space, a lot of cars, because of smaller class sizes?
Yeah, one thing that the board had done during COVID, but actually, we had a conversation prior to COVID, is reducing class sizes, and we made some commitments that we were going to reduce class sizes. And so by reducing class sizes, it causes to have more teachers, more classrooms for our regular education, and therefore, that has caused us to have our specials, in some cases on parks. Not all of our specials are on parks, but depending on the building and depending on the year, there's a couple of teachers on carts in, in each of our elementary schools. And so we're trying to look for any possible way. Of course, we could increase class size, but we don't think educationally that is the right answer, so we want to try to look at other, other possible answers that we could do other than increasing classes. The committee further talks about some of the improvements that need to come up in the athletic area. We have stadium turf, and we made a promise to the community we would replace when this was out. We think we're going to go at least one more year, so it'll be year 15, so not this summer, but the next summer, we're looking at potentially doing a replacement of the stadium turf. We noticed our tennis courts are showing gaps. I don't know if anybody plays tennis in the room, but there's gaps that are larger than a tennis ball. And so we listened to the architect and the construction manager talk about a million-dollar project to replace the tennis courts, and we still have that in our general fund or even casino money, and so we're going to look at a fix. So Jim is working with people that do tennis courts and say, what fixes can we have in the short term? We talked about the soccer field, because some have talked about our, our playing surface and potentially going to turf or fixing our playing surface. Some major building things that Jim brought up are probably a higher priority. Many new board members don't know, but we have replaced our high school roof, at least parts of it, over time, and we have a few more parts to go, and so Jim updated us on the high school roof and the timing on that. We talked about the administration building, the well specifically, and we're looking at some options of the well. We talked about the rental house, and so the rental house, right now, we're not sure if it's worth continuing to rent, and so we had a conversation about, is it time for us to give notice that we are no longer going to be in the rental house business? The house has cost us significant dollars. I think we had to put a new well in.
We have.
We have to put a new well in. We put in lots of new appliances. We've done a lot of work through the rental house, and I'm not really sure if that's something we want to continue to put money towards. We're a school, we're not a house rental industry. Irrigation system, the split HVACs, the split systems are the small ones inside offices, and Jim has been replacing them, there's about 30 in the district, we've replaced about 16-ish, and we have a few more to go that are on order right now that we're going to replace. We talked elementary playgrounds, we've heard that. Mo and I went, and he went with me to Donuts, and we heard from several elementary schools that we need to consider upgrading and improving our playgrounds, and we think that we'll probably put that in our, on our PIL list, our casino money list, as potential replacements for certain structures on the playgrounds. I don't think we could do a complete playground restructure, but we could do some things that are either broken or replacements. And then finally, we talked about electronic signs. Two of our buildings, Beal Lake and Sonoma, do not have electronic signs, and we've also talked about the electronic sign out front of the, of this building, and then we talked about the high school electronic sign, which is off. There was a question when I was doing my live show last Friday from a community member, and quite honestly, we are in progress of fixing the electronic sign outside. It's basically the two, there's two boards. One of the board is not talking to the other board, so we can't update it. Any other, there's any news on the electronic signs or in high school?
No, sir, I got a call 5:30 Friday, and I didn't get a chance to respond to it.
Okay, so they called back, which is good.
They did call back.
I think that is all that we discussed in the building committee. The biggest news is, really, as a board, when should we go out and ask voters for funds to potentially update our elementary schools with another wing? And it doesn't look like it would be worth it until at least 2025, so we would get serious about it maybe in another year, I think.
Turf?
What's that?
Turf? Yeah, I have a meeting actually next week with a couple of companies that are, you know, starting, starting the planning phase now, so.
Yeah, so in general, when we, we're almost at a point now where if we're into a summer project, we need to order it this summer prior, so we'll probably come to the board next June or May or June to talk about any summer projects for the next year.
We are on 62.5% of the vote funds going into teacher needs?
Yes, 62.5 goes to projects, so that means what, the rest, 37.5% is going into general fund. The board, over a several-year period, this is for folks in the audience and people, I know, that will listen to it later, we used to have 75% general fund, 25% into projects, and we flipped it almost completely, so that we're doing less general fund and more projects. It's one-time money that can go away, and we found out during COVID, we lost $500,000 from the casino money, just like that, and it could really go away. If one of our townships that are connected to the casino do a large project, we would receive no funds. If we get 2.1, 2.2 million, it is possible we get zero, so we can't depend on it to pay for our general fund. So it needs to go to projects and maintenance, and then we can take that money out of the budget, so that, you know, we can put more money back in the classrooms on the general fund side.
I would just say, for all those listening, the building funds, the question I get all the time, I'm sure the board members get it, where do those, where's the casino money go? So that's a rough explanation of where those casino dollars go. And, you know, obviously, the district tries to be a good steward of those dollars, and again, whenever to bond, like a lot of other schools have in order now, we've been able to finance projects in-house out of those dollars.
Yeah, so our last bond issue was 2008, so, you know, it's quite, quite a few years in the past, 14 years now going on 15. We have not gone to voters for a sinking fund. Almost every school around us has a sinking fund. We're using the casino money like a sinking fund. So when people say you have the casino money, do you have more than everyone else? It's really not a true statement. It, it just replaces what we would not get for, for other, other funds that other districts get. Many districts around us get higher federal and state funds in terms of categoricals for free-reduced lunch, is how they set that up, and we get less in that area. And we also don't, haven't asked voters for, you know, sinking funds or any other villages, really, in, going on 15 years.
And then, can you just clarify a little bit about the rental house that we have, and why we bought it and?
Oh, the rental? So we bought the property next door probably five years ago now, and we always are trying to say, how can we, if we ever expanded the district, where would we go? Because we're landlocked, and so that land came open. We negotiated, the first negotiation fell through, and then we came back to it the next year, and then we, we believe that we had a good deal in, in purchasing that property. It had a house on it, not that. Not that we made a promise, but we said to the family that we bought it from, that we would maintain the house that was on it for a period of time. But we just feel like it, it's something that we're not, it's not our business to do, to do that. And so we think that we should, you know, move forward with no longer renting that house, potentially demolishing that, so that we could have that property to expand in the future.
That's what, the property behind the football stadium?
It goes all the way back to Harper Creek, by the way.
Not often we get to buy land that is continuous to your main campus, so trying to look down the road in terms of purchase. Any questions for, on the building committee?
Yeah, Rob, one question, and you talked about five million dollars for an elementary school for expansion. What about instead of expanding the three existing elementary schools, is there a reason to build a fourth school and not expand the three and put the fourth elementary school somewhere that would pull from another three? And what would you know, I know it's going to cost more than fifty million dollars to build one. But would it be better served to add a elementary instead of trying to expand on these sixty-year-old elementary schools?
Yeah, that's a, that's actually a good thought. And I think that we need to vet all those out, because that may be a better option to have schools that are, we know that.
I'm just trying to think where we would put it.
Yeah, we know.
Wildfield, Sonoma, somewhere on campus.
We know that having smaller schools is advantageous. I listened to our staff talk about this building that we're in, that was a junior high school, and it was about four hundred, four hundred and fifty students, and it was a nice size, right? And same with elementary school, we're getting up into the three sixty to three eighty of the elementary schools, the bigger ones. And if we had smaller schools, you know, maybe that is better. We also talked about doing grade-level schools. You know, we had the conversation about really having some on down the road, because many people like their neighborhood school, you know, they don't want to drive, let's say, from Wildspart to Sonoma for first grade, and then to Beal Lake for third grade and whatever. Yeah, so we have talked those discussions, but that is the first I've heard of that idea. It's a good idea to consider.
Since we have the length, you know, and there is lots of space here, even not including the ten acres. I wonder if it would be something to think about. Just like the whole school, yes, it costs more than adding on, but those elementary are, number one, number one, they're ancient. Number two, they're already spread out all over the place. You know, it's hard to get one and go to the other and build a lot. I would think if it weren't here, somewhere else in that corner, or this way.
East side.
Side, but.
It's a thought, because I, I haven't had.
The only drawback I can think of is you have, you know, you have to have another principal, or you know, so on and so forth, all that. But definitely is a definite thought, so thank you for that.
Any other questions, comments?
One thing that we put in the board report, in case you haven't seen it, it's called what is a mill? Like, it goes through what a mill really is, one tenth of a cent. You know, how much you'd love, you know, a thousand dollars of taxable value. It kind of goes through how much that is and isn't, because a lot of people don't understand the whole idea of a mill is in the first place. That's just a reference document. And then budget committee, we've really, like, talked about it. This Obermeyer had shared all of the September financials. We also talk about, you know, the student count and what that's going to mean, but we're not going to know until this audit is, and then we'll know how many students we have, and then we'll adjust for budget if we're there. The next budget committee meeting will be an audit meeting before the board meeting. And so the auditors will be here to present next meeting.
All right, information discussion, I am the Center for Academic Achievements.
All right, I'm going to bring Chris Meeker up. And Chris is the director of the Center for Academic Achievement, some people might call it alternative education. And some board members were curious as to how things are going, so Chris created a little report. And I will get that up on the screen.
So it's nice to meet everybody. I don't, I've met most of you, but some of you haven't. So I'm located right down the halls, and my doors are always open in case anybody ever wants to stop in and see what's going on, or just have a chat. So I'm not sure how many people have seen this document, this is one that Ms. Williams made up, but it's the virtual protocol document for this year. It just kind of goes over the virtual process, but you can scroll down to the high school if you want to. And it just kind of goes through what the process looks at the high school level. You know, the parents' involvement, what they go through, there's a, you can click on that real quick if you want to. There's a form that the parents, oh, no, that's all right.
So they're not a parent in this?
Yeah, there's a form that parents fill out.
Highly secured form.
Right. And so it basically goes through what happens is there's a credit audit, attendance audit, they look at all the different types of data for the students. Parents can request being moved into the program if they want to, so there's lots of different avenues for that. You know, we look at EDPs, we look at behavior, attendance, grades, you know, are they off-track, are they on-track, which pathway you would want to put them into where they're going to be most successful? And just all those things, so we can go back to the slide. So that's the document, and I can send that out to everybody. So this, these are the two different pathways for the HCCAA. So we have a twenty-four credit pathway, which are for sophomores, juniors, seniors who are off-track. And then we have the nineteen-credit pathway, and that is for fifth-year, fifth and six-year seniors. And so it is aligned with the Michigan merit curriculum that looks at Harper Creek credits, all the different things we have that we, that they have to have at Harper Creek. And it kind of makes, you know, brings them together. So if you want to go to the next slide, this is, and hit it again, so you can, one more, there you go. So this is the twenty-four credit pathway for students, again, sophomores, juniors, and seniors. It goes through, this is exactly what they need for every single class. This is what you need for your math, English, science, social studies, your additional requirements, and then your electives. And so what happens is, when it goes through the whole process of the parents, and the principal, and the MTSS team, and going through all the data and everything, there's a credit audit that's done. Once the credit audit is done, this is what I receive from the counselors and from Mr. Green and from the high school for these students into the program. And then, one more time, okay. And then this is for the fifty-six-year seniors. Again, it's through the Michigan merit curriculum, it's aligned with the state. You can see up here, same for the math, the English, the social studies, and the science are the same. The other category looks a little bit different, there's not as many alike.
How long does it take them to get through each class? Is it a semester or?
No, it's self-paced, but it should take them roughly four, seven weeks, some to eight weeks. Depending on, depending on the, so if they have five credits and they work on five classes, each class in Graduation Alliance is broken down to weekly assignments. So you're able to track how many assignments are getting done, and this is what they need to hit at the end of each week. So you can start, depending on how many credits they need to make up to get back on track with their cohort, depends on their pacing. So some students need to finish two classes a month, you know, but that's a pretty hefty, you know, that's a lot.
The kids that are far, you know, quite, quite far behind can, can use this to catch up very quickly if, if they put a mind to it?
Yes, yeah, participation engagement, yeah. So again, this is a little bit better view of what the enrollment process looks like. When you enter, you can enter in the second year if you're a sophomore. MTSS team, which is multi-tiered sports staff team meeting, they go through a credit audit, they look at attendance, they look at behaviors. They talk to the students and the parents, they sign contracts. And then, at that point, I make contact with them and I have an intake meeting with them. And the students. And anytime if you have any questions, I'll, you know. So these are some of the things I've tried to, or I am focusing on since the beginning of the school year. My big push was to really build relationships. And part of that is building the capacity of number of students to actually come into my classroom on a daily basis. Super happy, I had ten kids Friday in my classroom, so that's huge. Because these, you know, these kids are virtual, they could be working from home. So for them to come in, it's important. But I think it's important for them to feel like they're a part of the Harper Creek community, so they need to have a space that they feel welcome at and safe and secure. Building upon that is really making their learning visual, really talking about it, instead of just looking at a screen, sitting with them, you know, for periods of time and going over assignments with them. One of the things I've been doing lately is talking about short-term and long-term goals. We already really do that kind of during the intake meeting. But once I get them in the classroom and I start developing a relationship with them and talking with them, I really want to find out what their short-term goals are and what their long-term goals are. Like, where do you see yourself, you know, at the beginning of January? Where do you see yourself in June? What's going to happen this summer? Like, where do you see yourself, when and where do you see yourself graduating? One of the good things that came out of this was we were able to set up a lunch and breakfast program in the middle school. So that has got some kids into the classroom, so they have breakfast and lunch available to them if they want it. One of the things I'm working on, one of the immediate things I'm working on right now is transportation. There are a lot of kids that really would like to come in, but just, just can't. They don't have no way to get into school because of their parents working, or for whatever reason. So I'm really going to kind of dive a little bit deeper into that in the next couple of weeks and see what type of transportation we can provide to these students. Again, I talked about tutoring. You know, I'm, I'm the teacher, the mentor, the director, a whole bunch of different hats at the same time. So just helping them with whatever their needs are, with their classes. And then, and then reaching out to other resources we have in district as well as outside of district. I have a Google Classroom that all my students have joined. And this is where I put all the announcements, all the celebrations, all the resources. Parents have access to this, it's a, it's a great place, I, I put a ton of stuff on there. And then getting the students involved in extracurricular activities and participation. I think it's important for them to feel like, even though they're in the Center for Academic Achievement, that they're still students of Harper Creek High School, and that they can still be involved in extracurricular activities. So some supports that I've been giving students?
A question.
Sure.
So juniors and seniors that would fit into this program, that one program, would they still, if they're in the, can they get into the career center? If they have problems with their, you know, low grades like in English and math?
We haven't really tried that, I don't think.
They can, they have to pass, we're, we're working, we want to carry those students. They have to pass their classes. I don't know the specifics, but I know one of our multilingual students who's brand-new to our country, he, he has want to pursue cooking, so there's a freshman.
Right.
And then have somebody.
To potentially have one that's already in the career center and just poorly, that is behind in credits. Would they be able to fit in?
In the?
In the?
HCCAA, in the sonic track, yeah.
How many students are you currently serving?
Twenty-three.
Rob, I think you said you expect that to give to maybe employ at one point?
That's what, that was the conversation that the administrative, last year when we were talking about it. Forty was a number that I had talked of. We also talked about that, that would be, we would have Chris and a teacher. So, you know, at some point or another, we'll have a conversation about when's the time to, when is the program stable and enough students that we can do that? We have not opened the program up to anybody outside of Harper Creek. That's, that's just internal.
You mentioned extracurricular, are there any limitations on transportation or not?
Yeah, I don't think you can participate in sports at this point.
Right. But it's, it could be a goal.
Right.
You know, a short-term goal for them to get back on track and bring up the great players and.
But other extracurriculars that aren't, that aren't regulated, you're potentially into.
Can't be nineteen.
I don't think in private table sports.
There's a age.
Yeah, yeah.
What about, you said transportation, are you not able to use the school bus system? Or are they, is that possible?
I'm, I'm still looking into all that stuff, yeah.
We're exploring the possibilities of, what, what can we do for kids that need that? Right now, if we have kids that are getting tutoring services, we actually use the buses during the day to take them back and forth. Is it possible to use our buses to pick up kids that drop out here? Sure, it just depends on timing.
Right.
When that is, and when they, when they would go back home.
So this is just some extra, extra supports that I have done with the students. I've helped a lot of them with basketball parchments. You know, my big push is for all seniors, whether you're off-track or not, because I've been doing this for a long time. You'd be amazed at how much work can get done once January gets here. So I'm always, my big push in October is always, like, fill out your basketball, get your parchment done. I know you say you don't want to go to college, but at least fill out an application in KCC. Just get your ZELLO done, which is your EDP, get your community hours in, you know, so you have all that stuff in place if and when you want some, you want to do something like that. Some of the things I've also been doing is I have one student that's in graphic design, one that's in, wants to be a veterinarian. So I've reached out to Dickman Road Veterinary Clinic on Columbia. I have talked to Lauren a little bit more about what the process looks like for our students' job shadowing. So I've got a couple of those going on. I have three students right now that are going to be attending the KCC trades job there on the nineteenth. And I have a couple that are interested in the armed forces, so I've been reaching out to those specific branches to bring them in, to have conversations with some of the students. So this is something that, this is something I signed up for, that's Michigan Alternative Education Association Organization. This organization has three kickoff events every year for alternative ed students. I have three kids so far, I'm really trying to push for more. I'm looking at talking to the dropout recovery kids as well, because they are Harper Creek community students, and seeing if we can boost our numbers a little bit. But this is the first kickoff event in the state of Michigan for alternative ed students. It's a leadership, team-building skills day, where kids just go and they build skills, get to know other people from different districts, and hopefully do some networking and build some, you know, confidence and the participation. So that's one thing I'm looking at getting the students involved in. So this is just some basic numbers for Graduation Alliance, this is our online platform that we use. We currently have four schools within Graduation Alliance, our dropout recovery is Harper Creek Community Schools. Then I myself have the Center for Academic Achievement, so that's the one I was focusing on, the twenty-three.
So what they have, they have bring up, so the dropout recovery program with Graduation Alliance, and Chris and I have talked. We were trying really hard to transition those kids in that program into the Center for Academic Achievement. The dropout kids are ones that dropped out from Harper Creek at some point. Graduation Alliance has reached out to them and got them back engaged. And so we have sixteen kids completely dropped out, they were, then they reengaged great. And now we want to get to the next step to bring them into our umbrella again, under the Center for Academic Achievement.
And about fifty percent of the students, the twenty-three that are in the academic, for Center for Academic Achievement, are those pulled from those dropout recovery kids.
Are those twenty-three considered EEs in there?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
The sixteen are too, they're just in a different, they're a different category.
Right.
I think straight, we're bringing kids back in our umbrella and.
I think what I said out loud to. I think what I said out loud to staff, um, if these, let's say the twenty-three kids that are academic achievement, twenty-three kids, more than likely, they'd be at a different alternative school in Harper Creek, uh, outside of our umbrella. And so it's good for our kids, it's good for our school to have another option for these kids. And this is, you know, we're at the beginning. We have some questions that came up. And what about these, these things? And those are all the things we're wrestling with as we move forward, you know, in the process of how this program can grow and, you know, it'll become, I don't want it to become huge, but I want it to be a situation where kids have a spot if they're not as successful in the regular program and then are able to graduate and move on.
And I think it's important also that not all, these students are in this program for a lot of different reasons. You know, it's not just because they're like so far behind in credits. There's some people that have anxiety and so, I mean, there's a lot of different things that go into it. So I really kind of, the word, alternative education to me is not one that I really love that much. So I love the Center for Academic Achievement. I think it's great because it's all encompassing.
Do, do we still have kids that are on the regular graduation track?
Yes. So if you look at right underneath where tiered services, the second bullet, Harper Creek, the tier two kids are kids that are all on track to graduate with their cohort, that are virtual at home for whatever reason. They're not behind on credits. They're just taking all their credits.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. All right, we'll move on to continuity of learning plan ninety-eight C.
Okay, Lauren had referenced this a little bit. Uh, if you remember during, during the COVID, we had to have a continuity learning plan. Lauren, I went to different, uh, meetings in the county and they informed us that we have to continue with the learning plan one more year that is required for the budget purposes this year. It really is not something that has to be board approved, but we feel like we thought we should bring it to the board. Uh, on top of it, we also wanted to inform you of how we intended to use, um, you see that letter ninety-eight C. It's ninety-eight C funding is really more ESSR's money and it was through the governor's years grant. Um, and it is for learning loss. We wanna specifically use it for summer school as well as, I believe, um, after-school programming as we have staff available to do that. But in general, the continuity of learning plan, I don't wanna go too fast, but I'm just gonna flip through it. It's the same as you have seen in the past, if you were on the board for COVID at all. First goes through some assurances, our cooler district, all that stuff. But it has assurances that we said we will do, you know, we will have an extended learning plan. We will have the transport, uh, linked on transparent reporting. We'll have end work assessments, the NWA that Lauren talks about. Um, we have to give our goal, we have to report back to the board how we're doing and our goals. Virtually, if we have a option for virtual, and we do still have a virtual option for all students, um, they have to select to begin this school year or at least at each semester if they're gonna be in the virtual program. Uh, but we do have a virtual program for kids and we do have kids that are still involved in virtual school. Chris talked about several in, in her presentation, but we also have some kids in K through eight that are in virtual programming. Uh, we have to provide in-person instruction, obviously, we are doing that. Description of extra instructional delivery is, is talked about in here. Pretty much we're at a point now, make sure we take care of our kids with disabilities. Right now, we're at a point where we are just teaching normally with the understanding that we have to keep in mind that kids had trauma over COVID, some more than others, where they were out of school, they were relatives passed, things like that. But also just the fact that they were out of school socially. Um, I talked a lot about our youngest students because they did not have a normal, uh, preschool program or even normal daycare program there. A lot of times were isolated by themselves. And so we're seeing behaviors of the youngest ages. And so we're really doing a lot of work for that, um, in the elementary school. If you add up a DK program, I think that would be, uh, an example of something that we tried to do that was pretty drastic, um, so that we could help students. And if you talk to kindergarten teachers, they would tell you they are still seeing extreme behaviors with the youngest kids. And that's just facts of life. Uh, and we are trying as hard as we can to do everything we can to help those kids. But in general, it just goes through what we're going to do. I don't know if you have questions from what you reviewed. You know, we have to have educational goals. Those are goals that Lauren's already talked about. And as base practices, and that's doing our, um, our assessment specifically. Our goals, there's the same goals you've already seen today. Uh, goals of instruction, we do have a hundred percent virtual option, but we really are trying to get kids in school. Um, our principals are talking parents into bringing their kids back to school as much as we possibly can. Here's where it talks about ninety-eight C and learning loss and using summer help as well as, um, uh, after-school programming during the school year. Academic standards, we're aligned with the state. We're making sure that we have a viable curriculum, but we're also making sure that we are nurturing kids through the process because we know that some of them had, uh, significant, um, mental health needs on top of being behind in school. Talks about what our assessment rating is, making sure we have equitable access. And we've done so much work with technology over the last three years. I think that's about it. Any questions that you might have on, uh, I don't know if we're learning. I am gonna ask you to approve it.
All right, so I'm not about the true policy of these.
Okay, I'm leaning heavily on the policy committee. And so we went, I'm gonna put this up on the screen just for, just so you can see it. Maybe a lot of work. It's taken a while, although it is a hundred and eighty pages of potential change. Yeah, that's a big page. And so, um, the, the policy committee went through this document line by line, all, every single page. Um, and, and most of the things were, that were changed were small. And I don't think I'm, uh, I'm not trying to buffalo anybody. It was really small changes. And then there were some legal changes. They took away, for example, the masking policy that was inside the term policies was eliminated. Anything to do with COVID for the most part was eliminated because we're kind of on the path to it. Um, there were some other things, every, as I said, just lines or legal changes. And then there's one policy that I really wanna talk about, but I wanna give you a flavor. So everything that is highlighted or is in red is, has, was a change. This is just simply the summary. So I'll get to the first one, just to give you a flavor. Okay. Oh, this is, this, this was the overview. So we'll pass that quickly. I'll get to a real policy. RPH twenty-one, we're still in the summary.
Lots of coffee, isn't it?
So for example, I said, I said there was very small changes. Here's policy twenty-four oh, and they changed and added the words held on. That's an example. Anything that blew our options, we've already chosen our options when we, we put the policies in place, but they changed the word while the but. So you see what I'm talking about, that it wasn't major, major changes. Instead of may, will, places where there were major changes, the committee talked and made sure. Um, the one thing that you need to be aware of is that we cannot hold a virtual meeting unless we have a military, um, issue where someone can't come, can't attend. Uh, so theoretically could happen if we have a board member who has, who is in the military. And I'm not gonna bore you with going through this whole thing, but that is the, in general, what the policy committee did. They went through to, to figure out. This one was interesting. I'm talking about it. Accounting board members and other individuals with disability. So if somebody tells us they have a disability and they're unable to attend, um, then we could hold a virtual meeting because of that person can't attend, because of a, an actual disability. Or we would allow a community member to, to attend and participate virtually if they have a documented disability. So FYI, and it's kind of like that, an FYI question. Okay. Stop reading. Anybody in the policy committee want to talk about anything that, in, in there? Are we good with recommending the changes as Trune has described to us? I'm good.
I agree.
We're pretty thoroughly went through all.
We're a fun group though.
Everybody. So if you wanted to read. This is the Reader's Digest version of all of the changes. Uh, I thought I counted up on me. There were sixty-five. So sixty-five policies had some changes in them, and this is the Reader's Digest of, here's the policy, here's what's changed. So. I wanna make sure you have access. Now, the meat potatoes, we have one policy, policy fifty-four oh seven. I've sent it out to the board. Um, I've talked about it quite a bit. Um, and this policy directly relates to curriculum, instructional program and curriculum development. It's a policy we currently have. So there are several additions and everything in red are what the additions are. First is parents' rights. I think that there has been a large push in the United States, in Michigan as well, that parents' rights are, um, are front and center. I believe a Michigan law has just passed where we have to post, uh, a piece of Michigan law that talks about parent rights, and this talks about it as well. And within that, sometimes we might receive complaints about instructional materials or complaints about library books. And so we did not have a process at Harper Creek of how to deal with those complaints. Like the process was, I would get a complaint, I would talk to the principal, I might talk to the teacher, and then we'd make a decision, then we would move forward. And in some cases, that wasn't enough, right? And we need to have a nice process. The process that is described here was one, this one, the first one, complaints about instructional materials, was, was created by Trune Law Firm, not by me. Um, and it had a three-level process. So a parent guardian would object in writing. They would go to the teacher and talk about it to see what's going on and why they were using a certain material in their classroom. And then they were either satisfied or they could appeal to the building principal if they were not satisfied. And then it got a little bit more strict. You know, they would get the reasons, they'd have a five, uh, school day situation to, to confer about it. They would talk, uh, and consider if the objection outweighs the educational and pedagogological reason or if the materials required the students engage in conduct or practice that is violating the students' sincerely held religious belief. If those were true, then the principal could say, okay, we're not gonna use that material. If not, they would tell the parents the reasons why. If they disagreed, the next step would be go into a committee review. Okay? And the committee is not the policy committee, because we don't wanna get that confused. The committee would be a group of staff members and a group of community members. Uh, my estimation would either be three and three or four and four. That would review the instructional material and then come up with, uh, a recommendation to the Board of Education for a final decision. So if the appeal went to all those layers, it would eventually come to the board and the board would have a final decision. What I told the board in the email, you know, behind the scenes, was that Trune had, the committee's decision was final and our committee had thought the board probably should be the final decision as to not put pressure on either the committee, the teacher or the principal. So that's kind of the, what I want you to talk about is do you agree with those steps for a instructional material complaint? Now, we also have library books, which is see complaints about library materials. And in this case, there's only two levels. And I actually created this because the committee did not think that the superintendent alone should decide on library books. And that's the way the, the policy was written originally. So this would go to the building principal first. And so the, the, the written objection would go to the building principal. They would explain why, um, that, that book was in, in the school. If the parent was satisfied, great. If not, then they would send it to a second, uh, which would be, would be the same committee review. And go through the same process as the instructional and eventually come to the board with a recommendation. So basically thoughts on that?
I mean, I, per initial thought, I mean, I, I think the policy committee did a great job. The only, the only, cause again, you know, whenever you have a process like this where it's, where things get escalated first. I mean, the goal has always been solved at, at the lowest level, right? And, uh, this hit the mark. The only suggestion I had was under the curriculum item, I think it was the second level, where the principal, and it says, the building principal will confer with the relevant classroom teacher. I only thought it's what it makes sense, in the spirit of trying to resolve it at that level. I think that the building principal confer with both the teacher and the parent. I know they're getting the letter, but again, would, would that give a, would that create a better opportunity to resolve it at that level if both sides would confer?
I think that's a good idea here. Uh, I think adding a parent in for that discussion, maybe so that they'll take a two-step process to get through it.
Yeah.
So a written deal?
Does the building?
Would confer with the rest of the classroom and the parent? I can't change it here, so I sort of don't.
So I have a question. If there is a, um, a concern during that time of concern, is that relative curriculum or in a library book, is that, how would that time or is it continued to teach until there's a resolution?
So Trune had said that it stays in either circulation or within the classroom until this process is done. Is what they answered. I think it's down towards the bottom somewhere.
I think that's why, so that why is your, your, you know?
I, I agree. And the, the fact that there's specific time parameters around this process. It's not gonna go, that doesn't go on forever. There's X number of days for response. So the decision is made.
Then it's ten days after the con, conference.
My experience typically this is, happens for like one or two students in the whole stu, class. Not the whole class, so, um, it doesn't, um, it's a step. I, I think it's a good process, especially for the books and maybe some specific parts of the curriculum where you're looking at the whole curriculum for all students. Individually though, um, we've always in the past, if there's something that is in the curriculum that's offensive to certain parts of our population, then we, as a teacher, you are already ready to provide that student with alternative, uh, lessons. So they might go to the, like, go to the library and do a research while we're, while we're doing things. Where that, that family might not be upset with the whole curriculum, but just this one part.
So what would be the total time in each, uh, situation to go through that process?
Yeah, they want, there is no time for that at first.
The first one, there's a one that goes into five, within five, six days, within ten, so I said fifteen. And then the committee is up to, I think, thirty days total. Thirty calendar days.
So you could be looking at forty-five days that something is out there that may not be acceptable for different reasons. Being employed or saying, feels a little long to me, but, um.
I would just hate to have an instructional book questioned and have it to be that remedial like shelved. Yeah, so, you know.
I think that's too restrictive.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. Well, we have, we have had some, uh, I don't know if I call it complaints, I, I think questions about instructional material and our library books in the last year. And, you know, we wanna take it very seriously when those come in and at least the process is going to be something that I think people would feel like they had that out versus we just have this meeting and say, sorry, this is what we're gonna do.
Well, I think the other important piece of this, from a transparency standpoint, is make sure our community understands that this process, that, um, processes are great, but if you knows about it, they're gonna work for it most of the time. Probably, uh, the best way to communicate this is through, you know, maybe the website, but we'll probably have to, we'll have to make some decisions about that as well.
How often does it come up?
Well, more of recent. In my first fifteen years as a superintendent, once. Last year, three times.
This may or may not be the place to say this, but as far as what's in the library, um, I guess, I don't know if the process is the same.
It's, you know, it's similar.
When, when, when I was in school, you know, go to the library, have an opportunity to check out a book. It's kind of the, more of an individual thing. Used in curriculum, one would think, given the sensitive nature of, uh, maybe the world we live in today, you'd stay as close to middle of the road as possible. live in today, you'd stay as close to middle of the road as possible.
I think there is a difference between instructional materials and library materials, because instructional materials is for all, and library, I think, is what you're saying, is the library materials is a self-subsys. And then we have people in our libraries that can help teachers or help students with book selection that's appropriate for their age, as well as their maturity.
Well, I think that's a key component of this, Rob, is all age-appropriate, maturity.
Yeah, certainly a book in a, in an elementary building and a book in a high school, they're obviously much different.
Yep.
But the, the library is very similar, except for a two-step process instead of a three-step. And as I said, the original that we looked at was a one-step process, which was the superintendent and superintendent decided, and then informed the parent about it. And the committee didn't feel like that was good, because, you know, one person being the sole decider, you know, is reasonable as I may, may seem. I may have my own biases that I don't, you know...
So in both scenarios, the final decision maker is the board?
Well, that, that, as I said, Trune said committee, the committee said they thought the board should be the final decision maker.
I'm, I agree.
Yeah. Yes, the committee says the same thing, I believe. I don't think I'm talking to them.
I think we're, sounds like we're always aligned, but I think the speed at which you, you know, which...
The...
That's what Mr. Branson first articulated, is getting which gets to the final decision.
Thirty days was quite a bit of time in that, that one step there, I just... Yeah. I think the reason for that is when you get a committee together, it takes a while to get a committee together, first of all.
Definitely.
You know, scheduling issues, just think, what are we trying to get a committee together for anything? So if you're taking people out of the, out of the staff and out of the community, you've got to have some kind of...
I, I'll disagree with that, just again, it, just, before they do 145 days, which what I wouldn't expect it to, it could go a lot faster. Just, the community sees that, they might think, well, that's a long time to go through that process. That's half a semester. But again, I think that could go on.
And there are ways you can mitigate that, Rob. If your segments come up more and more, maybe you create a standing committee, so that every time something comes up, you're not recreating real with the committee.
We've been kicking it around in the administrative area, so, you know, who should sit on the committee?
Yeah. Create a committee, and that way you can, you can move quicker.
Who's willing to sit on, you know, for a certain time, you know?
Yeah.
Get people, and just say, we might be together.
Yeah, and for library books, I mean, reading the book is part of the committee's job, so sometimes that may take a bit of design, a bit of...
Depends on whether it's second grader.
Yes, sir. So I, I am suggesting, I'm not sure if the board will be ready tonight, but that we move forward with this. There was a couple of edits, so you may want to wait till the next meeting, but I, I do think sooner than later, we need to have a process, because, you know, we have people potentially challenging things as we speak, and we want to make sure that we're prepared. One thing I heard was adding the verbiage, "The building principal will confer with the relevant classroom teacher," and "parent guardian with the private school days." You know, if we do that, are we okay with the committee as written with the Board of Education? Will that hack on the committee's recommendation?
I don't know.
If so, I'm going to recommend in poll that we pass all of the Trune policies. Now, Trune's different than Neil. Neil had a three-meeting situation. Trune says you can do it right at the same meeting you talked about. So I recommend that we do that. If you don't feel that that is appropriate, then we can do it at the next meeting, but that's what I'd be recommending.
Okay. I'm good with that. If there's a remediation process.
All right, any further things for the policy updates? All right, school of choice, second semester.
Uh, it'll be, will be my recommendation that we do not open school choice second semester. We already talked about a, our elementary schools are larger than normal, they are super high. Our high school is as large as it's been since I've been at elementary, and so I would recommend we don't open school choice up, and we stay with our current student population.
I did have a discussion with a client, oh, we could go last, wondering if we're going to have open comment. That's it.
Yeah. It's, it's, uh, in the past, we would have, especially if we had open spaces, but I think if you talked to our teaching staff, I don't think they would agree if there's open spaces. Maybe in certain classes here and there, but not as, especially in our core content in high school, our elementary classrooms, I don't think we should add students at this point.
I would say in our, our two or three-year district, you know, doing no one's school, Rob, that was definitely something that I, I don't know, hey, we don't want, I don't have enough, so I'm supportive of that.
Any further on school of choice second semester? All right, we'll move on to comments from the audience.
All right, this is Booker.
And please state your name and address, if you would.
Eleanor Booker, by college, Adamant Creek, Walker Creek, obviously. I just want to thank the board, or whoever sponsored the meet candidates night. I think it was sent almost excellently, that everybody had a chance to go first, everybody had a chance to go last, everybody got to have their say, and I learned a lot by attending the meeting. And also, on a side note, I want to say, I think you guys are great, because I've been coming to board meetings, I think this is the third year, and I've never seen students as involved as you guys. So I think, thumbs up to you. Thank you.
Thank you for that high praise. It's great. We love to hear things like that. Ms. Van Duser?
Valerie Van Duser, Sixth Falcon Avenue East in Val Creek. And I, this other lady, would just like to give you some feedback. I was not able to attend in person, I was vacationing elsewhere. And, but I did watch the video of that, and I wanted to share my things as well. I, I don't know if every school board does that, but thank you for doing that. I think it was excellent, important, and value-added. I also wanted to share my observations with you. And that is, I, I got some feedback on the number of attendees at that event, because my own observation of involvement at the school board meetings, having attended them for two years, is, is not a lot. And so I was encouraged to hear that there was at least more attendance at that forum, but I, the other observation I had, and some of the candidates', you know, responses were, my thought, my first thought that came into my head in some of their responses were, was, well, if you were at the board meetings every month, you would know the answer to that. Or you would know where to go find that information. So I, I found that interesting. I also found it a little concerning. I'll leave that part there. I, conversely to that, I am very grateful. I get a lot out of these meetings, a lot. And you know that I'm not hesitant to speak about that, but thank you again. I appreciate it very much. I thought it was just, it was excellent. So thank you again, and thanks for letting me share my observations.
Thank you. Thank you. Mary Inman.
Hello, I'm Mary Diane Inman. I live at 803 Clark Road, which is Lake Lake. I do want to thank you for offering that wonderful presentation on your website. I know I was at the meeting when you told me when the meeting was, to actually be in person, but somehow did not see it. A neighbor of mine sent the link to me, and I thanked her, and then I said, have you seen it? She said, no. I said, well, I'll probably see it a second time before voting. The other thing I wanted to comment about is, I've noticed these little signs around my community that says, "Home of the newest Harper Creek Fever." And I thought, what are these? So I just find it interesting and exciting, because most of the time, these are neighbors and people I don't know. I do want to suggest and hope that we will eventually go into more teaching of history in our schools. I see a lack or a change in where we are focusing. To me, history is very important, especially American history. I thank you for all of your service and everything you've done for us, and I'll be excited about voting in time and time, and so that's all I can say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Got any comments? No more, no more public comment? Make sure to listen, but... All right, move on to action item A, Academy of Learning Plan - 98C.
Chair calls that the Harper Creek Board of Education approves the continuity of Learning Plan 98C as discussed and reviewed.
So moved?
Support. Been moved by Mrs. Allward, supported by Dr. Borders. Do we have discussion? Here in scene now, please call the roll.
Dr. Borders?
Yes.
And Mr. Barry Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Allward?
Yes.
Mr. Jason Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Martin, yes. Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Okay, motion carries seven zero.
Excellent. Action item D, Trune Policy Updates, Mr. Secretary.
Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approves the Trune Policy Updates as discussed and reviewed.
So moved. Support. That was moved by Mr. Myers, supported by Dr. Borders. Do we have discussion? Here in scene now, please call the roll.
Mr. Jason Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Martin, yes. Mrs. Allward?
Yes.
Dr. Borders?
Yes.
Mr. Barry Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Okay, motion carries seven zero.
All right, action item C, School of Choice Second Semester.
Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education decline participation in schools of choice, section 105, for the second semester of the 2022-23 school year.
So moved?
Support. Been moved by Mrs. Allward, supported by Dr. Borders. Do we have discussion? Right here in scene now, please call the roll.
Mrs. Allward?
Yes.
Mr. Jason Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Barry Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Borders?
Yes.
Mr. Martin, yes. Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you for that. Action item D, that we had earlier, Radio Tower.
Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education authorize the superintendent to enter into the Radio Tower lease agreement between Harper Creek Community Schools and Calhoun County Consolidated Dispatch Authority as discussed and reviewed.
So moved?
Support. All right, it's been moved by Mrs. Allward, and who, who got second?
Oh, my Barry. We have to handle it.
Supported by Mr....
That's like in the free throw contest, like you give this to them.
Good, good job. Supported by Mr. Barry Smith. Do we have any further discussion, Mike, besides the free throw? All right, here in scene now, please call the roll.
Mr. Barry Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Borders?
Yes.
Mrs. Allward?
Yes.
Mr. Jason Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Martin, yes. And Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Okay, motion carries seven zero.
All right, as we wind down here, items for the next meeting A, always have to reach out to each of you, text and email, seeing if you have anything you want, you need to consider to have the agenda. Student board reps, if there's anything you guys would like to see on the agendas, please let me know through email. One consideration I had is that, as the board knows, we'll have to do Mr. Ridgeway's evaluation. He had talked about December. By chance, depending how the election turns out, I don't know if we want to consider November date, depending on how we see things work.
We're all going to be out here, no matter what happens.
No, not necessarily Aaron.
Aaron's position will be immediate effect after the election is certified. And last time, it took several weeks. Typical is 10 to 14 days.
So it, it, it...
Really doesn't matter too much, you know, a new person could, I would not have the same information that we're in had.
But that's my concern. So let's cross that bridge as we come to it. Otherwise, what I might suggest is that we consider a meeting before our regular meeting in December.
Yeah, I think this is the best timing for personal board members.
Yeah. We have five, early here, five, something like that. Okay. All right, anything else? All right, we adjourned at 9:47 PM. Goodnight.